Good evening and welcome to the Town Council Workshop of October 10th, 2023. Going to begin with roll call. Counselor Meany?
Present.
Counselor McGuire?
Present.
Counselor Gass?
Present.
And I'm Counselor Chapel and to my right is Town Manager Josh Tiffany. And we also have with us this evening, Don Garrish, who's representing Eaton Peabody for the town's search for a new town manager. Counselor Height should be joining us shortly. I will give you an update when I have one from him. As I mentioned, this evening, we're discussing search criteria for a new town manager. And that's really the bulk of our agenda and hopefully we can knock everything out and get that process started sooner rather than later. Don, how would you like to begin this evening? Do you want to go over the materials you sent or what's the best process?
The timeline is the one that sets the process going forward. There's details in the timeline we need to talk about, but I think the timeline is the one that we need to kind of think about first as we're going through it. I just wanted to say, there was a question when you made the decision, I lost your meeting, about what happens if we have to go out again. My fee stays the same if we go out once, twice, three times. But your cost would increase if we have to re-advertise or something like that. But my fee, you have me for my fee until you have our new manager.
Until we become a manager, okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
Yes.
So I'm hoping we don't spend a lot of time with you, no offense.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Well, I think the longest I've been is a year and that was in Gardner and Millmockett were the two longest that I've done. We went out three times in Millmockett and two and a half times in Gardner. But in the end, we found somebody, so that's the important thing. So I put a draft timeline, starting with tonight's meeting. And I actually did two timelines and I only sent you one, but I have the second one here. Because the two timelines I put together ended the first or second week of January, so either timeline could work. But what that timeline sets is for candidates, so they know what our timeline is. It's a public document. They can have an idea of what, how long you're going to take and we're going to take on this. So if we can just look at that draft, do you all have a copy of that draft?
We have three documents from you, the memo, the town manager job description, and the staff and public comments portion. Was there supposed to be a separate timeline?
Yeah, I don't think we have the timeline yet.
You don't have the timeline?
I don't think we do, now that I'm looking at it. Yeah.
Josh, can you, I apologize.
I didn't catch that when you sent your original email. Sorry about that.
Well, that's on me if I didn't send it to you.
Do you guys all have the email I sent earlier?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Sorry that that was late.
One of the issues that we will need to talk about, we'll get to the timeline. Have you thought any more about, is there going to be any other groups or anything part of the process? Because we had some discussion when I was here before. I think I gave you my thoughts on it. But that will impact the timing and how we do the work. So I don't know if you've thought about that.
We've talked about it a little bit. We certainly wanted to get your input, but we were feeling like we didn't really want to form a separate search committee. But we still would like to incorporate resident feedback. But we were thinking a good resource for that might be our volunteer committee members and if we just choose from some of them who might want to participate in the process.
Well, I have, last time we did this, it was during COVID.
Yeah.
And we did everything through Zoom, if you remember. We never met, really never met. The whole timeline was done through Zoom. In the timeline, you see, I do have a proposal that we did last time and we might want to think of doing again, which is, one, getting input from all your employees and department heads on what they're looking for, for a new town manager. And holding a public meeting and invite the public to come in and to do the same thing. I would run the meeting and ask them about what they are looking for in the town manager and what the issues are facing Gray. And then, at the very end, when you have finalists, we have done, I think I mentioned this to you, have a meet and greet of the finalists, of the public. Public can come in and it's not a formal one, it's informal, but they can come in. The way we do it is both candidates there on the same night, so the public only has to come once. Their significant others are invited to come. And it's more an opportunity to meet the candidates. And that has worked. We haven't done one since COVID, but we did it eight to 10 times before. It seemed to work out.
Are those typically well attended? Do you get people participating or is it, what's that like?
I've had two that no one showed up, others as much as 80 or 90, depending what's going on in the community. So, you know, if you get 20, 15, 20, 30, it's a good turnout.
Okay. I mean, I don't know how others feel, but I definitely would be interested in having some public input at the beginning. Yeah.
I agree with that.
Yeah. So I think we'd be up for that.
So if you look at the draft, and I apologize, tonight, we're meeting to discuss the process and the timeline. If you agree to a public meeting and department head interviews, Noah, did you get the draft of the information you got from the last?
Yeah, the staff and public comments document. Yes, we do have that.
So I did send that out to you. It's been a while, things have changed. I think we probably ought to do it again if you're up for that. And I would interview individually all your department heads. Give staff an opportunity, if they want to send me an email, to, I will take their input. And for the public meeting, invite the public here, ask them the same questions, but also give them an opportunity to email me their thoughts. So we make it very open, people can do that. And I thought we would do that before we did the ad, the final ad, to get everybody an input.
Yeah.
So if you look here, I just used October 24th as a date, but I would set that up with Josh. You could advertise it and we could schedule it here. Just so you all know, I run the meeting and it's better that way.
Oh, yeah.
If we post it out here.
For sure.
And the key to the meeting is that we go forward. If we don't go backwards, we're going to be positive working of what we want for a future manager.
Yeah, we actually already have workshop space set aside on the 24th at 5:30 if you want to. We could probably do the public meeting at that point. Yeah.
Sure, I know, why not?
There's enough notice still, we could put that out.
I have a draft notice that I'll send to Josh.
Okay.
That you can advertise on cable, you can put on the paper, whatever you want. It's inviting everybody to come and lays out the format. So that would be great.
Okay. Josh, do you feel like staff will have bandwidth to participate in interviews and things?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'm pretty sure they'd be willing to make time.
Or rather, if anyone misses the opportunity, that is their loss.
Yeah. For the emails you'll be sending out, do you send those out with preemptive questions on there or do you just ask for open feedback?
I don't try to set the stage.
Okay.
Let the individuals send me their thoughts. There are two questions I ask. One is, what do you see the issues facing Gray in the next five years? And that's to kind of get a picture of what people are thinking, the public's thinking, what you're thinking, what staff is thinking, so that is, you know, if you read the comments before, there was a long list of issues that staff and the public had. And the second is, what are you looking for in the new town manager? Characteristics, education, personality, experience. I push people, I won't tell you to give me answers because I need to hear from them and we put it together, but I don't have, I don't try to lead them anyway. I just try to give them an opportunity. And to be honest with you, most people and most staff are ready to.
Yeah, I don't think people are going to be shocked.
I don't think they're going to be shocked at all.
I hope not.
I think they're going to, so if we do that on the 24th, take from that, send it to you. We probably ought to look at then where the emphasis is, if we can get some emphasis and kind of look at the ad and then make a decision on the ad. I gave us a week to approve an ad and get it out on October 31st. And if we can do that, then the ad would be placed on November 1st. And we give about four weeks for the deadline for the resumes to be back. You would all get a copy, a booklet, with all the resumes in them for your review.
That's good.
You'll have all of them. I will have a memo in that and I will give you my recommendation on ones I think you should consider to interview. Anybody, I do backgrounds and preliminary backgrounds on all of the candidates that come in. And I'll have a reason during the meeting, which will be an executive session, why I might not be recommending somebody or why I am. But you will have them all and we would then meet that next, I put Tuesday because I knew that was your meeting days. I don't know if that works. We need about an hour's time to go over the resumes and decide on who you would like to interview. If that timeline works, we would meet the next week for the first round of interviews. How many people we interview will depend on the quality and the number of candidates we get. I would say at least one night, it might be two nights, to see what we do. I will draft some questions for you. And you can review and tell them, tell me you like them or you don't like them and add your own questions, but I'll give you something to work with for those questions.
Are you talking about the first round of interviews?
Both rounds, the first round, I'm sorry.
So the fifth, we have a meeting. Do we have, do you have anything scheduled before that?
No, we don't. We haven't done our November workshop spaces yet. Are you feeling like you'd like to do it earlier?
Well, no, no, I'm thinking it's, you know, he's got Tuesday, December 5th here.
That's one of our regular meetings. We could do an executive session prior to it.
Yeah, maybe start at 5:30.
5:30.
That will give us a little extra time. If we don't need the extra half hour, great. But I would hate to come out here at 25 past 7 because we ran over.
And then the next week, the 11th through the 14th, would be the first round of interviews. And they would be in person if we can, if the candidate can come. Depending where they're from, if they're from Indiana, then we'll do a Zoom.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they worked pretty good last time when we did them.
Yeah, and I think everyone's gotten a lot more effective at participating and running them.
Yes.
They have beat into us.
And then after that, you narrow it down. It could be one, two, three, however you narrow it down. We do a second round. We're running into the holidays, so I've pushed it to the first week in January where we would have a second round of interviews, complete background checks on your finalists. Reports would be done for all of you of what we learned from those background checks. Financial, educational, criminal background checks. We will follow up with talking to people they've worked for, not just the ones they give us in their resumes, but we'll have a report for you on each one of the candidates. And then I had the second to the fourth, the second round of interviews with the finalists. And I had put down department head interviews last time. Did we have the department heads?
I think we did, yeah.
I think it's a good way of doing it, let them interview. They don't have a final say in it. They just meet, I'm in the room with them, they ask questions. At the end of the interview, I'll say, tell me positives or any concerns you have. Do it with both candidates and I will report that to the council before you have your second interview. So you will have that information. And then the meet and greet, I think it's a good idea. We would do that before we do the interviews, the second interviews, and try to do that on one night. So that would be the week of January 2nd to the 4th. After you do the interviews, if you can make a decision, we'll work through it, work on a contract, and then hopefully have a decision by the end of that week. So that gets us to January 8th through the 12th. Depending what the finalist is doing, they could start 30 to 40 days. Some have 60-day notices if they're a manager somewhere. So I think you're looking in March date before the new manager would be onboard. So that's the proposed timeline. Now, last time we did this, we gave the finalists, we can talk more about this. We gave them each a question to answer, if you remember. And we can do that too. As we get to the finalist, can you remember, I can't remember.
I can't remember now. No, but I thought it was a good, it was a good exercise.
Right.
For them to go way ahead of time and have the time to think it through and then come back to us. I thought it worked well.
We can look at some draft questions for you, but I think it's a good exercise to see how they think, how they're, they deal with an issue. I think it was, I can't remember.
Was it staffing issue? I don't recall.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, if it was a policy decision and more of a staffing personality?
I'd be lying to say I can remember.
Yeah. I'd like to say I can remember.
Was it, I'm sorry, was it standing for the pledge of allegiance or not? Was that the issue?
I don't think so, no.
I'll find it and send it to you.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that wasn't the issue here. But I think too, as we interview them and as we hear from other people, you know, what that question is, I think, you know, will hopefully come to the surface. And it doesn't have to be the same question for each candidate. So, you know, if there's a concern or an issue that we want to address, it can be done independently.
Right. And when you do the second interviews, the finalists, there will be some questions the same for each candidate, but then there will be specific questions of things that might have come up during our interview that you want to ask specific candidates. Maybe a background, maybe areas of concern you might have. So it won't be the same. The first round will be same questions for everybody, but the second round have some same questions, but some specific questions for each candidate. You'll have an opportunity to be involved in that.
Okay. What kind of submission documents do you have for an applicant initially? Is it just a resume and a cover letter or do you ask for any other work samples of any kind?
I don't, I think if you want to do that for the first round of interviews, that's the area.
Yeah, I mean, when I've interviewed people in the past, I do find work samples to be, depending on what the work is, to be beneficial.
Do you have any ideas on what you'd like to see?
I think for me, someone who's well-written and can communicate. Writing skills is important. You know, you get a sense of how they communicate and also just how professional their writing is.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can ask them, we have the first round of interviews when we talk to the candidates before they come, send us a copy of a report that you did or a recommendation that you made. We'll work on something so you could have some.
Yeah, I mean, I would also be open to some like alternative formats, like if they did an interview somewhere, it's like a digital submission or so. I would be open to that. I just want to see how well someone communicates and engages.
Actually, the speaking part is an interesting idea.
Yeah.
To see video of them either from a meeting or whatever is a very interesting idea. I like that.
Most candidates, I usually go on if they're a manager and go to the community they're in and watch the meetings to see how they interact with the elected officials and the public. So I will do that, but we can.
Yeah, but if they have some, like a work product they've made that they'd like to submit that's digital or something like that, I'd be open to that.
So that's the process. If you're okay with it, I'll redo this timeline, put some dates in.
Sure, I think your dates you've got here work pretty well for it.
Yeah, they actually do a good job. Even the 24th.
Well, I picked Tuesdays because I knew you met on Tuesdays.
No, I think it's done.
So if we're okay with the timeline, then talk a little bit about the ad. And we don't need to do it, but I gave you a little different ad than I've done in the past. It talks more about an ideal candidate and what you're looking for in an ideal candidate. I've done that recently. I think it gives you an opportunity to be more specific on what you're looking for. You know, if you find the ideal candidate, hire them right away, but you know, I'm not sure you will. And we can add to that after we do the public meetings and talking to the staff about it. But take a look, you got the ad before? Did you get that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a job description from your email and then we have this handout that we got this evening.
Is the other ad you did?
Yeah, we did get that.
Yeah, it was one of the three documents.
Oh, yeah. Wasn't it?
Yeah.
That was the ad we did last time.
That's the old one.
That I drafted, just another one that was handed out tonight.
That's the confusion. I think Krista, this one looks completely different than the one he sent us.
But it has a lot of the same information.
Oh, I don't have that. Or maybe I just am not opening it in the right format.
Yeah, open it in the right format. Yeah, you got it. There it is.
Now I see it now. Okay.
You can look at those. We don't have to make the final decision, but think about if you like those. The other area I think we need to look at, and I started looking online. The first part of an ad is usually a description of the community. What its values, what it's doing. And I think, I think we could dress up, I guess the word I want to use, the first paragraph a little bit more. And I went online and made a copy of something that's, it's about, it's on your webpage, About Gray. And there's a lot in that. It talks about your population and what you have here. And think about how we might want to dress up that first part of the ad. Then I thought, maybe there's things you're working on that you want to let the candidates know. I know you, I looked at your 23 or 22 goals. Do you have, have you set new goals for?
We have. I have to type them up, yeah.
I couldn't find them on.
They're not on there yet.
But when you do, if I could have those, I think we ought to kind of put them in to give a candidate the idea of what your goals are or some areas that you really want to focus on.
Yeah, I guess my first thought in this ad when I was reading it was just, yeah, I'd like to kind of sell Gray a little bit more than we're doing it here. You might find some good content about long-term goals from our 2020 comprehensive plan, which we could share with you. There were some wording in there might also.
The new resident, was there, there's a new resident?
Oh, yes. Kyle did, I think, where was that?
How did I get into that?
About Welcome to Gray, I think.
Yeah. Kyle, if you're listening?
Yeah.
Three times with the lookout.
So if you go to our website under about, there's a section called Welcome to Gray that has some content in there you might be able to pull from.
The New Resident Guide is in progress.
The New Resident Guide is, yeah.
Thank you.
But there is some language on that website.
Okay, let me draft something so you can look at and then, I always find it's easier if you have something to look at and then you can say, I don't like it. I'll redraft that. I didn't, and think about this ideal candidate. I like the idea. It kind of paints a picture better than just a paragraph and gives you an opportunity to say more things in my opinion. So take a look at, take a look at that. We don't have to finalize that, but I'll do some work on that. The other question is, in the ad we did, we didn't put the salary range in. Today, you need to put the salary range.
Yeah, I was going to say it's typical to have that.
Yes. So you need to think about what you're looking for, for salary range. And I can tell you, just so you'll know, the ranges have gone up a lot in the state. So, and I know you did a salary study and so we need to think about a range.
Yeah, that study is, that data is a couple of years old at this point, so I'm sure numbers have gone up again.
I would say you need to look at 110 to 130 to 135 for your community. That's what I would have you think about. And I can, I can give you, there's a recent study done of communities. I think MMA has a recent one. I'll get that and send it to you so at least you can look at comparables so you have an idea of what other communities are looking at for salaries.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we have some like anecdotal data points about towns around us, but we don't, yeah, if we have something more comprehensive, that.
Yeah, it's by size and size, yes, but comparable downtowns and businesses and valuation all come into play, but.
Yeah, I think that's where we struggle a little bit. A lot of the comparable, the towns we use to compare our data to, we've used size as a comparison and also the valuations of the town.
Population.
But I think we, some of the towns we're using like Scowhegan are a very different story than what we have to compete with here in Gray, so.
I mean, geographically, we're pulling and competing with a different group of people.
Right.
Whether, you know, whether we want to or not.
You're right.
We're not in the same market that Scowhegan is, no offense meant to the folks in Scowhegan.
No, you're in a better market down here, in my opinion, but.
Well, yeah, it's certainly a different, more aggressive one for sure.
Yes, without a doubt. So we don't have to finalize that, but you need to think about.
That number doesn't scare me as much as some of the nightmares I had around pay.
Oh, you were thinking much.
Given where we, you know, where we were headed.
Well, that's my first suggestion. I'll do a little more research. I might scare you later.
It's coming up.
I jinxed myself.
Well, you just, you also don't know if you really like someone and they just can't, you know, they're getting paid a certain amount and you're way below that threshold and you might, you might increase it just because you want the person.
I always ask for their salary expectations in the ad. Just so, you know, someone might say, well, I'm on 145,000 instead of your top scale of 135. Recently, we advertised at 175 and the candidate came for 185, so. But it wasn't a community, it was a.
A city. At least it was a city.
York just paid 175, but anyway, they're a different community.
Yeah, and they're also in a different market.
Yeah.
They're in a different market as Scowhegan is, only on the other direction.
Absolutely.
But my example was, if they come in and they're a great candidate, you take a look at it and say, maybe there's other things we can do. In a contract, if you negotiate, you can work out some things.
Yeah, I mean, it's also the starting salary and so you want to be careful not to start too high either.
Well, that's why I put it at 110 and went to 135.
Right.
I gave you a range.
I guess I just have, I don't, you might not know the answer to this, but we will be signing a contract with this person before we pass a budget for FY '25. So I guess I'm not really sure how that, how that works. What did you, what did you guys do last time? Because you hired in the spring last time.
It was the same timeframe, right?
Yeah, it was, I mean, it will depend. We have the manager's salary budgeted in this current budget.
Right, but it's not, it does not go up as high as the range that.
No, it doesn't. But we will only need to get to the end of this fiscal year. So that gives us a little room to maneuver.
And you are working with some funds from me in this seat rather than Nate in this seat. It's definitely coming out of savings, so there should be some overall. so there should be some over under the overall budget.
Well, you'll have savings in health insurance. You'll have savings in other areas within your budget because of the transition time.
Yeah, I guess, I'm also just thinking ahead to if we hire someone at a pay rate that we agreed to and then we have a budget season like we had this year where it fails, like how does, you know, how does that?
That'd be his fault. Their fault.
Their fault, exactly. I think what we did last time was we pitched Nate a kind of a lower first-year salary and with the expectation that it would go up after that, and we did increase it pretty substantially.
We did, yeah.
Yeah, one of the other things that is done in a contract is say, this is your starting salary. And then if you pass evaluation after six months, you can get another step. So you don't get it all at once. You can figure that out.
Yeah, we will be doing an equalization project for FY twenty-five, so that might help us.
Equalization, you're doing a revow?
It's like, it's not, it's like a mini.
Paper one.
Yeah, paper, yeah.
Brunswick just did it and decided not to use it. I don't know.
Oh, really?
We may do the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was not pretty. But anyway, that's not here or there.
It's not pretty for anyone, yeah. Okay.
All right, let me see my notes. Was there anything else I had? Oh, I did do your physical twenty-three goals, but you don't want me, I printed them.
You can use those. I haven't, like I said, we have FY twenty-four goals we just, we just completed within the last month. I have, I just have to type them up for the public consumption.
I think that, you know, the other sort of guiding documents that we're working with at high level now is clearly, obviously, there's the comp plan.
Yeah, right.
Which I think anyone worth their salt, if they were interested in a job, would find and read that. We also have the, yeah, the village information, which might not be as readily apparent to someone if they were looking for it.
Is that called Village? What's it called?
I can, we can.
It's the, yeah, the Gray Village Gateway.
Yeah. We could send you links for those.
Okay.
I don't know if you would, as a rule, put links in an advertisement or not.
That's fine. The other thing that we can do is when I put down a link to your website, we can also do another link if you have, if we put some documents together, things that you want candidates to look at and have a link for them.
Yeah.
And then you can go right on there and look at your comp plan, look at your Gray Village plan. Talk about, is that including the transportation issue?
Yeah, so it's actually on the website. It's under Departments, Projects and Planning, and then it's the Community Visioning for Gray Village. There's some documents in there that we finalized with the public last two, well, last year.
I can work with Josh and see if we can get the documents and have a separate link directly to those for the candidates.
That would be great, I think. Because there are other things like, you know, like Pet and Open Space is relatively new and we've got.
Our Open Space Plan, yeah.
Yeah, we've got.
We have a lot of plans that are in the works and we, I think our main goal, all of us, is really implementing those plans and that's really been our main focus for the last, probably since the comprehensive plan was passed. And we're working with the DOT to really secure funding for the infrastructure that will support all that planning work. So that's, that's our main focus right now.
I would suggest that you're gonna have to prioritize those for your manager.
Yes.
And so if, if we can help them along by understanding what priorities are now, I think that's beneficial to a candidate. Not saying the rest of them aren't important, but.
In a broad sense, personally, the way I would characterize it is, we have a lot of, we've done a lot of planning.
Yeah.
We're in the process of executing the biggest parts of those plans.
Yeah.
And we're looking for someone who's gonna measure success by helping us achieve that. As opposed to looking.
Some more planning. We don't need any more.
Yeah, as opposed to having someone come in with the thought that they need to help us formulate a plan.
I think that's a great line in the ideal candidate ability to
Execute.
Work with plans for finalization and we'll work some wording out, but I think that's a good suggestion.
Somebody to help us execute what we got and help us come up with more stuff to do.
Yeah. Matthew, did I see you over there?
Well, I was just, I was looking at the, the ideal candidate paper that we got. And I get a little queasy when, you know, it, you know, the charter says town manager is required to be a resident within one year, but that requirement can be waived. And, you know, which is pretty wishy-washy, and then this gets even wishier or washier by saying, you know, that residency is preferred but not mandatory. I would prefer it to say, you know, if this is our ideal candidate, going by the charter, I'd say the ideal candidate lives in Gray.
I would agree with that.
You know, and we could mention that that can be waived, but to just sort of say, oh, it doesn't, it's not a requirement in the charter anymore because we're reading it as not a requirement, but it says required in the charter, you know, so.
Well, it doesn't say exactly required in the charter.
Oh, yeah, it does.
I mean, within the charter, though.
The town manager shall be required to reside in the town within one year after appointment unless this provision is waived.
There, well, that's my point.
Yeah, it's a requirement that can be waived. It's not, yeah, you know, maybe.
Well, you can put that exact word in.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's just do that.
I would just quote the charter.
The charter says this, but, you know.
I think if we, I don't, I hear what you're saying, Matthew, and you're right, the charter is, does say that, both that it's required and that there's an out. But I think if we limit ourselves to gray residents, we're gonna be in real trouble because it's just not a big enough pool, but.
Well, no, somebody that moves to Gray.
Sure, if they're willing to move here, yeah, that's a different story.
Ideal, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, if we give any weight to the words of the charter, you know, I would say it's ideal that they live in Gray.
Well, we can put in the wording of the charter so candidates know.
Yeah, exactly what they're up against.
There is a, there is an opportunity not to live. I would, I would say to you, the issue becomes one, are candidates, a good candidate that lives half an hour away from here.
Certainly. There are circumstances where we would waive it. Obviously, that's why it's in the charter, you know.
Right.
But like I say, if we're, you know, if we give any weight to the words of the charter and what's, you know, this idea, you know, what's ideal would be that we wouldn't have to waive a requirement of the charter, I think is, would be.
I think quoting the charter is a good compromise.
Can't go wrong.
Exactly what I wanted.
Yeah. One thing I would like to stress, and I might be in the minority here, so if I am, please speak up and feel free to overrule me. But I think there's probably a lot of really qualified managers or people who have life skills and experiences that would make for a good town manager that don't necessarily hold the position of town manager currently. So I don't know what kind of outreach we could do for people that might be looking to shift their careers slightly or might have an interest in municipal government that don't currently work there.
It, you know, a lot of times, we do put in there that are related private business experience. We put it in the ad. Be honest with you, we haven't seen a lot of people wanting to change from their profession into the municipal profession. Maybe someone who is heading up a nonprofit. We see that a lot, making a change. We can talk about, because the next question is where do we advertise? So that would get into the point of what we're looking for and.
Yeah, because I agree. Something, someone who's had nonprofit administration experience or, you know, works at the state level or, you know, has sort of some government experience, I think, would probably still be a good fit for the work we do here. Did anyone else have any thoughts on the ideal candidate or what you'd like to see?
You don't have to make the decision tonight.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we got time because we're not gonna finalize it. I gave that to you as a thought process to think about. But the other question is where do you want to advertise?
Actually, before, because your, your, your comment sort of jogged something I meant to ask. What exactly are the certification or the qualification requirements for a town manager? Are there any?
No.
Legal?
No.
So there's no, there's nothing expected or?
No. You, I'm sorry, Dan. You can get certified by ICMA, the International City Managers Association, but that's a voluntary certification. You get certified by the Maine Town and City Managers Association. So within the associations, there's certification process that a candidate, candidate or a person can go through to have certified main manager or certified ICMA manager, but there is none.
Okay, thank you.
So it's talking about advertisement. Last time I, we advertised on MMA, which is a national, ICMA, which is the National Association. That's gonna cost four hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars for a month.
For both of those or just?
MMA is free.
MMA is free.
Right. ICMA is four fifty. I think they've gone up to five hundred for a month. I think last time we, we also decided to advertise on the New Hampshire and the Massachusetts Municipal Association. Together, those are gonna cost somewhere around five hundred to five hundred and fifty.
Each or?
Total, together.
What about Vermont?
The, not that we wouldn't want to, but Vermont's numbers of managers is very small compared to the other associations. It was just a decision trying to focus on where there's more managers, be honest with you, and that's. If anyone is looking, they will see it in ICMA, MMA, on your website, because we'll put it on your website. I think I mentioned this last time. We've tried doing LinkedIn. We've got resumes from all over the world that.
Mexico City was one last time.
Yeah, that's right.
It doesn't snow there.
And you just don't get the specifics that you're looking for. The other one, if you want to, there is an association of county managers that you can advertise, but ICMA is made up of, is also county, so county managers will be looking there. We really haven't found another good location to advertise in that's worth it to get good candidates. But if you have ideas, we can look at it and see where else. There's an, if you wanted, there's an association, there's an association for any type of nonprofit organizations we could think about.
That's what I was wondering about the main association of nonprofits. I was wondering if we could qualify to post on their website.
I'm sure they would for a call. I'll find out about that.
Yeah, because I know that a lot of nonprofit organizations advertise there successfully, so if we could.
We can, we can look at that.
When you, when, Krista, when you're thinking like people who work at nonprofits, nonprofits run a pretty huge range of.
Yeah, I would be thinking probably not a really tiny nonprofit, somebody running a larger organization.
I think a community action program. I mean, I have a friend who worked at Community Concepts for many, many years and ran a number of different programs and was kind of senior management and then ended up becoming a town manager in Norway and seemed to have done a fine job there.
Right, right.
But he had a lot of experience and at the senior level, so I, yeah, I agree with you. There are a lot of nonprofit staff who, you know, this would be a big leap.
Right.
But, you know, a much larger nonprofit.
Or someone, you know, working at, you know, a state college or something, that's like a larger public organization like that.
I guess a thought I have would be the Main Water Environment Association. In the wastewater industry, so like, like superintendents of large sewer districts are really, it's a comparable level of complexity and, you know, so, you know, that's a thought.
I would say anyone that's working in the municipal world today, if they're looking for something, they're looking at MMA, ICMA, and the ones that we're, we're gonna advertise in. It's, it's looking a little bit outside that box, box. Anyone in state government is looking to, would look at those too.
Would they? Okay.
But I think the nonprofits is an area that we, we could look at to do some advertising to see, to see what.
It's a similar type of person who works at a nonprofit who wants to work in municipal government, so that's just, that's my thought there, yeah.
Right. All right. So are we okay with MMA, ICMA, New Hampshire, Massachusetts? Those are the four. And we'll put it on your website and we put it on, it doesn't cost us, we put it on the Maine Job Bank too. There's no, there's no cost to us. We put it on there to see.
What's the main, I don't even know what that, what's the main job?
There's a main job bank site that anybody looking for a job in Maine can.
Oh, just, it's just literally, it's like a Craigslist type thing for jobs?
A little bit better, but yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Same idea. Free posting, free app.
Yeah, it's, we probably won't get anybody. But it's free and we will put it on.
Well, I mean, it'll end up on our Facebook page, so I mean, it'll, it'll get out there.
Yeah, and did we advertise locally in the paper? We didn't. We don't recommend that, but some communities want to advertise in their local paper.
If we had a local paper, I'd be all for that. I don't know if the new Gloucester Exchange, do they take job advertising?
I'm just thinking more Sun Journal or Press Hour.
Yeah, oh, okay.
But those, the ones that, the ones that would get some benefit is maybe in a coastal community where people live away and get the local paper and then they'll get it and, you know, a tie to Maine. Someone says, well, I live there and my nephew can come up and be the manager, so, okay, I think, I think we're good. You know, we're, we're hoping to get. And do you remember how we got, I'll have to look, twenty?
I was surprised by the number, but I don't remember.
Yeah, it's twenty twenty-five. If we get twenty-five.
Oh, that's way more than I would anticipate.
Twenty-five, but the quality is the other part.
Quality dropped off fairly quickly. Or the relevance of their work experience to this job, yeah.
Do you do any, just one-on-one outreach with anyone? I mean, I know you're not a headhunter, but.
If I know somebody is looking for a job.
Okay.
And I'll know if someone's looking, I will contact.
Okay.
Yeah, that's. And right now, there aren't a whole lot of managers' jobs open. Oakland, no, Winslow got taken. Around here, there isn't, oh.
Is Naples still looking? It's like, they're still looking.
Yeah, yeah. Different, different place, different time, so.
Yeah.
That's all I have. If, if, you know, we'll, the key takeaway is I'll redraft the timeline, get that to all of you. Now, do you want me to send it directly to all of you or send it to Josh and he'll get it out or to the chair? Krista, how do you want me to do this?
I mean, I, I think we could probably just, you could send it to us all directly. If you're, because you're looking for input from all of us, so that's, that's why I have me. Do you have all of our email?
Oh, I was gonna say, are all the emails on the website?
They're not, they're, like, you have to click through a portal to email.
Send them to me.
Why don't you send it right to me?
Yeah, okay.
Well, just, no, send, send me a list of all of them.
Yeah, it's really just our first initial, last name at graymaine.org is the standard.
And while I'm here, so I can get it on my calendar, I'd like to do the interview with the department heads and the meeting with the public on the same night. So I'll come up, maybe in the, you can figure out, Josh. I need fifteen minutes with each of your department heads. I need a space for one-on-one. And then what time would you want to hold the public meeting? Invite the public here?
Well, we have, we have workshops based scheduled at five-thirty, but.
Well, no, this is a separate meeting for, this is the meeting with the public, with me.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying we, well, I don't know, do we still want to have?
The twenty-fourth was?
Yeah, October twenty-fourth. Did, are we, we would all be there for that, I imagine, right?
You don't have to be, but yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's not our meeting.
Right.
If, if.
Well, I guess we, we could have a workshop. Well, I guess we, we could have a workshop before it and then start it. What time do you think is a good time to have?
I leave it up to the community that tells me what's the best time to get people to come. If it's seven, we'll hold it at seven. I, um, if it's six-thirty, we'll.
You know, earlier, I, I have no evidence to support this, but the concern was giving people a chance to get home from work, have dinner, and that's why we start at seven.
Right.
Um, but I've no empirical evidence that that works for anybody, but that's, that's our.
Just sort of counterbalance that at programming at the library, we also realize this coming year, as it gets darker sooner, we, any nighttime programs we have is definitely cutting off a segment of population that just can't drive at night.
Yeah. Well, we can, it, the meeting could also be
Hybrid.
you know, hybrid, if that works for you.
However, I would have it, I'm sure you will, but I would have it, uh, on cable and have it taped and shown again for the public to, to look at too.
I think we should stick with a five-thirty start time or maybe six at the latest.
That's fine. I just, yeah.
I, when do the clocks fall back? They fall back November fifth, so it should still be, I'm hoping it's still light at five-thirty.
On November fifth, no.
No, but on October twenty-fourth, it falls.
Yeah, I, I, I'm fine with the twenty-fourth at five-thirty.
Yeah, I think you just.
The only issue, the only issue with that, it moves my schedule all week. Because I was using the sixteenth to the nineteenth.
We're not saying to change the date, just keep, the twenty-fourth is still good.
You're looking at this?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have it as a twenty-fourth for the public meeting.
October twenty-fourth, right?
Tuesday the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Did you want to do it a different day? Nope, okay.
Uh, hold on.
Just looking at your timeline that you gave us.
Yeah, I, I was, I told you I did two timelines?
Yeah.
I was looking at the wrong timeline.
Oh, okay.
Never mind. Whatever I put down is fine. Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
So the twenty-fourth at five-thirty?
Yeah, or do we think six is better?
Either one's fine with me.
It's not going to, it's going to be an open meeting, right? It's not going to.
And we don't have a.
People can kind of come and go and participate.
And we don't have a meeting after it?
No.
No, this would replace our workshop space.
Yeah, I would say six.
Okay. Well, let's do six then. Yeah.
Okay, October, all right.
Let's do six o'clock.
Six till blank.
Till?
When?
Yeah.
Till the cows come home.
Oh, no, you don't want to be alone.
And then you would do your department head meetings earlier in the day? Is that your thinking?
Uh, yeah, yes. Yeah, I'll work with Josh on that.
Yeah.
And I'll send a draft, so you all can see it, but I'll send one to Josh, a draft of the notice that we've used. So you can get the notice, I'll put it out and get the public thinking about it.
Okay, that would be great. We need that, uh, that would need to be up by next Tuesday.
I'll get it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good, unless you folks have some questions. We have one resume already that someone sent in without knowing anything else, so I just want to tell you.
Wow, someone's really excited.
Take that as a good sign.
I have a weird question. I don't quite know how to get this one out, but essentially, how do you look for a candidate that has a long-term history with their job who's looking to move? Which is to say, how do we not end up back in the same place in two years?
Well, that's part of the whole process is evaluating a candidate. Why, why are they moving? Why do they want to leave their community? Sometimes it's a progression to a bigger community. Sometimes things politically aren't going well in the community. Some are looking as a stepping stone and you need to worry about that. You have to worry about someone coming in and wants to retire for the next three years and be here and move. I mean, the average life of a manager today is three to five years.
It, it's, it's a little alarming to me that I have more seniority than, I mean, that I was here, we hired a manager, that manager's gone and we're doing it again.
Yeah.
I find that a little alarming.
Yeah.
But I think it's the way of the world, unfortunately. And the continuity piece for me is still a question that's unanswered.
I think that's really important too, and maybe that should be in our ideal, ideal, you know, qualities list, you know? And it, it's addressed a little bit about, you know, becoming part of the fabric of the community and all that sort of thing, but, yeah. Somebody, you know, who wants to make a career here in Gray would, you know, or, or spend a, you know, significant portion of their career here.
The other thing you look at and not, if there's family involved, if there's kids in the school system, if their significant other is working, it, you, you have to look at all the, all the different things that make up a candidate. Now, the last two contracts I've done have been five-year contracts. Both the community were looking for some stability and the candidate was looking for stability, so five years, we've done now. There's pros and cons to a five-year contract, I will tell you. But the typical one we do is a three-year contract.
I think that's what we had with me.
Right. But I just want to let you know, Kittery, when we did that, they wanted the candidate, the candidate wanted it for a number of reasons, and it was a five-year contract.
I think it, again, it's circumstantial, isn't it? We're going to have to get into it and see how it shakes out as to whether we go one way or the other.
Right.
I think for this town manager, from my point of view, one of the skill sets that they need is, um, we're, we're a smaller community confronted with larger community issues and our processes are not, um, able to keep up and to do the work that we want to do. So I really think one of the qualities that we need in a candidate is someone who can help us do that process work, not project work, but process work that will, as I like to say, get us, to convert us from an oral tradition to a written tradition so that we have the documentation, we have the processes in place.
Developing processes.
And they're robust enough that they will survive a person moving on.
Well, I think the other issue that you may see is someone who likes to do projects. I mean, you have, you have managers that like that. You may only get three years out of that person, but if they've done and
Yes.
accomplished a lot in the three years, it's a benefit. So again, as Dan says, you have to look at all the skills and qualities of each person, see how they fit where you are, where you want to go. And as I say this all the time, is, is not only the experience, the education, the personality, does it fit you, does the person fit your community, fit in with what you have here?
Yeah. I think an important quality I'd be looking for is, um, someone who has, you know, a dynamic personality that could really
Energize.
energize not just staff, but also the community around the things we're looking to do and, um, the, engage with business representatives and residents alike, so, um.
A jazz band leader.
A jazz band leader, drum major, no, I'm just.
We can put that, we can put that on with the ideal candidate.
No, I, I, I just, I think, you know, it's, I, I hesitate to say people person because that can get you into trouble as someone who doesn't know how to manage.
Yes.
But, uh, someone who can manage, but also engage and connect with people.
Inspire and motivate, yeah.
Well, the, the, the issue becomes looking at what they've done in the past is, is kind of looking in the communities, if you get someone that's been in the community, what have they done? Has it been a maintenance, just keeping things going? Has it been a lot of projects that needed to be done? Has it been whatever? And kind of look at that to see if they fit into your community, so.
This is, and this is just something that makes me a little queasy. One of these, um, is, uh, one of these ideal candidate bullets is a person of unquestionable ethics and integrity. And, you know, I guess I just feel like anyone who thinks that their ethics and integrity are unquestionable is not somebody I'm around, I guess.
Yeah, everyone makes mistakes, for sure, yeah, you know.
And they should be questioning their ethics and integrity all the time. I mean, at least that's my life experience.
But we are looking for the ideal person.
Right.
Well, I think, again, this, this is.
The ideal person is questioning their own ethics all the time.
Well, I mean, the, the question I ask some candidates before, is there anything in the past we need to know about? That's a question I ask candidates when, or you would ask them.
Sure.
Now, we can do the background checks, sometimes things aren't there, and you need to ask the questions to them, you know, is there anything we need to know? You need to know. And they'll say, well, what about anything? You, you know, so we'll work on those questions too.
Okay.
What's the one thing you don't want anyone to find?
There's so many.
You, you would be surprised at what you hear sometimes.
So, Don, we should be expecting from you, um, the ti, an edited timeline and an advertisement draft, is that, and then we?
Yeah, I can have that tomorrow.
Okay, and then we, um, what, what input should, would you be anticipating giving you, like?
Unless, I think the timeline's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
And the ad is, you fill in the blanks. It's, you know, it's going to say that you invite the public for an important meeting, uh, I will run it, here's what we're looking for, if you can't come, here is the email. It, it's just factual about the meeting. And I'll send it to Josh and you can fill in times, locations.
Right, that's the notice for the public meeting. I'm talking more about the advertisement for the job, will you be sending a draft?
Yeah, I will, I will look at the other areas we talked about today, about what your, what your goals are, what you're looking at. And I'll do a draft
Okay.
by next Monday, if not sooner, and jazz up the first of the, the, uh, first paragraph.
Okay.
Josh, I will need updated numbers of budget and personnel and population, if any of those have changed. Because you need to put.
Right, and I, and then you won't be finalizing that until after the public meeting?
Right, but we can start.
Department head stuff, okay.
Yeah, and you can start thinking about if there's things you don't like in, in the ad, things you want to add, like tonight, is there things in there? And we'll, we'll meet right after the public meeting so that we can work on the ad, because the ad's got to go out in a week.
Okay.
Okay?
And on the twenty-fourth, that is fifteen-minute intervals of every department head available?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's interesting, yeah.
I can only bring who I can, so.
I have a dentist appointment that day, but I might change it. I don't want to come and get speakers.
Let me, let me get back to you tomorrow and at least get the fishing poll out there to find out how many, how many people are interested.
Yeah, and i, if, if it's not a good day, the day before or something like that, you know, I'm, I'm open.
Okay. Thank you very much for that.
So it sounds like we will need, um, some workshop space after the conclusion of the meeting to finalize the advertisement with Don as a council, just when we're thinking about the agenda. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And then are, do you, are you going to need any more time with us, like we're having tonight and that we haven't accounted for on the timeline here?
No.
Okay.
I will each week send you all an email, uh, after we put the ad out, how many resumes we got. I will tell you how many from Maine and, uh, give you an idea, just so you'll have an idea of what, what we're getting. And most of the resumes don't come in until the last week.
Okay. So the next time we'll be meeting with you one-on-one would be, um, after the public meeting on the twenty-fourth and then not again until an executive session on December fifth?
Right. Now, here's, just so you know, uh, Krista, I will send, have sent to you the booklets with all the resumes and I will send it to your home address.
Oh, okay.
I will overnight them out of Augusta. And the only reason I do that is not, is just the confidentiality.
Yep.
And then you'll have them and get them to the council.
We can come pick them up if.
Or whoever you want me to send them to. If it's not you, I can send them to whoever. But that's the way we do it, just, just to make sure, you know.
I'm, I'm, what would, I'm fine with it being sent to my house, it saves me a trip
Yeah.
here, yeah, that's fine.
And so we'll overnight them.
Pick them up if you.
We may have them done earlier.